This conference will now be recorded.
For the monetary select board, March 22 at 6:00 P. M. Susan and I, Justin are present at town hall. Scott is absent for tonight's meeting. So we do a quorum. First item on the agenda is the review of the fiscal year 24 proposed budget. And the first subcategory is the debt service options. I think David was talking about coming this week. I continue to not make sense from this projection. Why is every time that we're permanently financing? Well, why is the maximum paid down $250,000 just in principal? I mean, I don't think we ever, we don't want to pay. For the large pay downs.
Oh, yeah, why did you?
Number two. Yeah, we talked about a large pay down, but $250,000 is more than large. And then why would 2025, the very next year?
Be low.
Be very low.
I don't agree with that either. And I also wondered about, I mean, if you're gonna have a low year, maybe it's last year, so you're paying less in interest. I also wondered, like, with the no pay down, it's still that, that's the minimum required.
That's the minimum required.
So I'm assuming so that bump is like 180. The thing that gets me ultimately, I mean, normally I'm like a front loading principal person. Like, that's what I did with my own home, right? Whenever we could, in the early years, we'd pay extra the principal to reduce the term of the loan and the total that we paid. However, we're tied about front loading with 100, just looking at the library, we'd be front loading with $180,000. And what was it on the, on that truck? So really, it's like 230, right? Because there's like another 50 for that truck. Yeah. Um, and for that, like, we, we save about 40K in interest. That, like, I'm not saying it's not a savings, but the purpose of borrowing is to spread payments over time. And having to front that 250K this year, um, that's a big opportunity cost, right? There's, that's a lot of money upfront. And that, that seems like a lot to me. I do, however, feel like, looking at the numbers, we're better off to take out the five-year note this year rather than to wait the additional year. I don't really see the advantage of waiting that additional year.
Well, part of it is, I don't really know what's going on. Why, if it's a five-year note, why are we doing a huge payment this year? It says permanent financing fiscal year 25, but 25, a small payment, and then in 26, it becomes regular for five years.
I see. It's peculiar.
I, I cannot disagree with you. I was struck by it as well.
I, my opposition to the five-year note at this, or the five-year permanent financing at this point is that there's so much principal left on the library to do a five-year financing. At this point, gives you very large payments, probably larger than we need to do. I mean, we're talking the permanent financing. If we hold off till 2025, I mean, the problem is, we're not gonna pay 250,000, so this doesn't give you really accurate numbers. But I would rather do a larger pay down this year and then maybe do a permanent five-year financing next year when the, when spread out over five years will be more manageable. It's hard without actual numbers, because we really don't have them, because we're really not gonna pay $250,000 this year.
Well, I also know that, that the, the rates we're using in the different scenarios are not all the same either. So in, in the first scenario, right? So the 2023 rate, 4%, the 2024 rate is 3 1/4%. So we're projecting that next year, the one-year note would be less than it is now. But that two years from now, it's more than, it's gonna point more, right? But in the other scenario, in like scenario four, we've got 2023, the one-year note's still 4%, but now the five-year note's still 5%. We never know, right? We're just guessing what those future rates will be and if they'll be higher or lower. So some of that variability that you're seeing in there is probably from those different rates. That is projecting that the one-year note's going to be lower next year than it is now. But the five-year isn't. They don't know what the basis of that is.
Yeah. What I would do, I mean, all things considered, unless we can really get a better projection for the five-year permanent financing starting this year, which I don't feel like we have here. I mean, I may, maybe I'm missing something, but it always seems like it's coming one year later than it says it's coming.
And I'm not really sure, like, do?
That says fiscal year at the top of the year, so he's not talking calendar year. And, and why is the interest? Why is the interest different in 2024? Wouldn't the interest in 2024 be on the same? Large amount. If we make the large pay down, it's 35,000.
No, look at the bottom of the interest rate.
No, just the interest for next year on the library, 2024, to pay 7,000, 55,000.
Right, like, I don't.
I have no clue. What I would do is, I would just do one-year notes like we've been doing since we can still do that and do these payments, which is more or less the principal payment that we did last year with the interest that's required.
That, that's higher than interest required, but I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing to just say.
Yeah, it, oh, it's higher than required, but the interest, I think the 35,000 is the interest that's required on the, on the library and 6,814 on the dump truck. And then keep the principal payments the same, because we did get rid of two debt service items last year, the transfer station and maybe a tractor.
So the, and we have that 50 grand, or 51 grand, or whatever it was, because it didn't, it was.
I would do that in addition to it.
Okay.
I would do that in addition to it, so that we keep working the principles down. It's not permanent financing, but it sets us up, you know, any money that we pay on the principal, lose money, not have to pay an interest in the future. And we're gonna be adding more items to the debt service.
I, I know.
So it seems like a bad year to take a, take any, take the foot off the gas. This is like not taking the foot off the gas, but not putting, not stepping on the gas, just kind of staying, doing the same principal payments we, we set up to do last year.
So higher, that, that, yeah, I see your point. Explain to me again why you think better to, to do another one-year when the current one comes due in November?
Because a five-year, a five-year payment with the principal that's left on the library gives us very high yearly payments just on the library loan.
Based on which there, are we looking at?
The, the, none of these make sense.
None of these make sense, but where we, yeah.
Just taking the principal that we have left, which is 800.
75.
875,000.
It's been a half, it's just a five-year.
Divided by five years. And he said that we're limited to only doing five years. We can't do more.
We can't do a longer one.
Right. And 875 split over five years, any way you slice it.
Right.
Hopefully, it's gonna be down to 775.
For next year. I mean, that's what I think we should do. I think it's a middle ground between, I don't think we should go down to minimum. I mean, we're already down to debt service payments.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting the minimum. I'm just try, I was trying to just deal with the one-year versus five-year first, yeah.
One year versus five year. I mean, yeah, if I can get a better sense, but in every case, so permanent financing in fiscal year 24, which this is supposed to be a principal payment of $160,000 each year on the library, plus the interest, which, you know, that one year is 200,000.
Yep. Well, and the assumption of what the, the pre-interest pay, the pre-principle payment was, is a bit confusing in and of itself.
Yeah.
And especially followed by the low year.
Yeah, it seems like every time there's another low year thrown in there, it doesn't.
The only one that doesn't have a low year is this one.
Which, which option?
The fourth.
The fourth. Yeah, the fourth does not have the low year, but it has a $250,000 payment this year upfront for a principal loan.
Right. All of the, the, the two scenarios that had us do a prepay were basically, as I see it, that's 100, because we have a certain amount, we have to pay the 70, but this was having us pay an additional 100, right?
Yeah. Then why is the interest higher when we're paying more principal? Is that related to permanent financing?
It doesn't. And so I, I saw that, and I have it circled. They have two times there that they put a $50,000 instead of 35,000.
It, it didn't make sense to me either.
So we're all on a page.
It's really.
And it's just on number three and number four. And they're two different numbers. It's not that it's the same number, it's different numbers.
I mean, I, I felt like there wasn't a significant, enough decrease in what I was seeing as the total amount.
I, yeah, I just don't.
To warrant.
I don't even know what to make of these things, really.
It makes me feel better that you say it too, because I was like, is it just me? But this doesn't track. So how do we proceed with that? We just come up with our own estimates and hope?
I would just do, I would do this. If it was just up to me at this point in time, I would keep the principal payments level. And.
Level to what we're saying they should have been?
Well, level to what we did last year. So we did about 100,000 in principal on the library last year. Well, actually, I think it was exactly 100,000 principal on the library.
And then the library.
I think it ended up being 100,004 or 125.
It's, that's wrong, like, this is right. This, the way that this has it is right, is 2023.
The third four?
125 in principal.
Why are they coming up different on the, what actually happened?
And 4,000 in interest. The 25 was donated by the friends, but we did do 120, 100,000 on their own, plus the 4,000 interest, I believe, is after.
Oh, that's three, not four.
125 and four, 125 and four. No, actually, yeah, that's on all of these, 125,004.
In 2023.
In 2023.
And it's FY, all right, this, oh, you're 24, okay.
Well, the town did 100,000 principal and the four.
Which was 25 for, right, for friends delivered, gotcha, okay. Okay.
That's what I would do, because it doesn't seem like, I think any way you slice it, it gives you really large principal pay downs. Unless somehow we can do a $250,000 payment this year, which I don't think is in the.
I don't think it's in the cards.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a strong feeling one way or the other about renewing for one year versus going for the five-year?
I, I would like to see it another one year, I think, at least.
Why?
Because, and just to get those principal payments down, because it's, you're gonna have other things on, it's, you know. I don't know if we ever had just two things on the debt service, but I haven't looked back to see, I think something, I think look back through all the warrants, I'm not going to do that.
So.
And then as far as the 160,000, FY 50, it sounds like we're not responsible for anything this year. It's not.
Been delivered.
In our, it's not delivered.
What happens when it gets delivered?
Then she'll take out the loan and there'll be a year from then. I'm guessing like if it came tomorrow, the payment would be due March of 2024. So then we would add something in there, but I have to check with Jim to see when it's coming.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, do we have to put it in this budget, even though we don't have it, was the question? We don't have to borrow, but.
Well, no, we would have to, we'll borrow once he gets the truck.
Right, but we have to be prepared to borrow. And what would we need, let's assume we get it next March, just for this scenario. What would be other than knowing that we're getting it and that we'll have to take out a loan at that time? Does the loan require a down payment? No. So we wouldn't necessarily, we don't need the money in this year's budget, we could get it from next year's budget.
Doesn't it have to be on the budget and it's, it's, it has to be already appropriated, so it's set aside already? That's how I understand it? Wait, once I, once we find out what the payment is, when you guys decide how long the loan is gonna be, whether this is gonna be a one-year note or if you're just gonna take a five-year loan on that truck, but I won't know any of that until she brings in the borrowing options once he gets the.
Gotcha.
Hopefully there.
So it's a huge decision.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I wish, I think it was, it was a good idea to try and get some options and figure out what's going on, but.
I, I would feel more comfortable if when we received the options, the options seemed to make a little more sense.
I'll make sure it comes next week.
Yeah, I mean, but, yeah. So can you try and figure out it while you're at it, if you don't mind? Why it says we're a five-year, like, it says on option one, it says permanent financing fiscal 25, but the fiscal 25 payment is the minimum payment of fiscal 24. And then the next, the next five years have some regularity to them.
It's, and I, I'm assuming the 2030 payment is a little higher, because they're just closing out whatever remains. But why not front load that?
Well, and then same thing, the next one says permanent financing, option two, permanent financing fiscal 25. But again, fiscal 25 is a very low, seemingly minimum payment. And then the next five years after that are similar. Just, I'm just talking the library.
Yeah.
And then, um, option three, it says permanent financing fiscal 24, but 24 is the minimum payment with a very high interest payment. And then five years of consistency.
Yeah, the, and the high interest payment in 2024.
That doesn't make any, because it doesn't.
This year on option three makes no sense at all.
That's on option four too, but they're different $50,000 numbers. I was confused.
It's funny to know I was not alone in that.
I was gonna figure it out if it was a percentage difference for some reason, but it, it did, it shouldn't be there.
The high interest payment in 2024 for both option three and option four are peculiar.
Yeah.
And how every time, the permanent financing always seems to come one year after it says it's coming? Maybe, maybe, maybe that consistency says something, maybe there's something that I don't understand about it. Well, that one is something I don't understand about.
And I suppose that if the loan is initiating in the February of the fiscal year, perhaps? All right. So if we want to do this, is that, where would that end up on the budget?
In the debt service. I mean, it would be, right now, we have a little bit lower of numbers.
We had those numbers.
Give me a, either sell a line number or a line number.
Yeah.
We had 135 for the library and 56, whatever it is.
Debt service is seven, 700, 700, they're all 700s, tandem axle we have in at 50, which I would bump up to, what does it say there, 50? 56, 815. And library, we have the 105, and I would bump up to 130. And we'd still be, right now, as we have it, we're down over 150,000 in debt service. So this would, I mean, we'd still see a significant increase.
Putting, putting them up to those numbers, I think it was, was still like 120 or some, almost that much below what they were last year for debt service?
Yeah.
So the tac, tandem axle already has a 50 in it, so we're just bringing it up by that 6,800?
So if I change that, you're still down by 118,000.
There are worse things. We're still down because we're not carrying the big, the additional big debt for the transition in the frac truck, right, so.
Right. I think so goes by, see next year.
And that money, is that, does that also show up in the special articles?
No.
No. No. Okay. So that's just raise inappropriate, correct?
Yes. And so it will affect raise inappropriate and we are over last year's of what we asked for at annual town meeting last year by 89,944.
Which got 118 of its service.
Down, but we're on another. That's what I would do, and then if we, if he can get us a better understanding of what's going on.
Let's put this in, unless we get some other information that we don't, don't currently have. I mean, I, I see your point about the big, the bigger principal payments resulting from the loan being taken out. So I, I think I was just looking to, to reduce the total of our.
I think you have one.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. I was just looking to reduce the total of our payments, but your point's very well taken.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the more, the more principal we pay upfront, the larger payments we make, lower interest, but.
And the fewer years the loan, but, yeah, and I think it all comes down to also guessing what's gonna be, what the rates have gotta be and that's always a question too.
So if we're good with that on debt service, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Town hall repairs. So Jim drafted up some repair numbers for roof paint, septic, HVAC, boiler. Uh, no numbers actually for lighting, but meeting room floor.
Yeah, he's suggesting I reach out to Matt Seager and see if it's been monitored, maybe they have some new technology.
Yeah. My personal opinion would be to, the finance committee wants to add the truck back into the special articles.
I saw the two, one, who was the opposed?
I would ra, I guess that's kind of somewhat unrelated, because at the end of the day, I mean, I would rather spend money on maintaining town hall rather than pay a consultant to tell us, because I, I think that some of the stuff, if it's roofs or paints or HVAC, can be done with. I mean, for the cost of a consultant, we could make some significant headway in the real maintenance of the.
Existing structure.
Of the existing structure. I'd rather see the money spent that way. I think that, you know, we're headed virtual in some ways and remote, and we still have employees in town hall, but I don't foresee that growing, uh, significantly.
I think ultimately we're.
And, and the storage is just.
I was just gonna say, I think the storage records, we're gonna have to base at some point in the not distant future. But I mean, you can put it off a little while. Meanwhile, I'm just looking over these, trying to decide, like, if it was my home, which ones would I be prioritizing? As in, like, this needs to get done now if I'm not doing a major renovation.
And actually, thinking about this, he left off the basement, he left off the, it's not on there at all.
Yeah.
And that, that would be my biggest thing, if you're gonna not put the money into feasibility, is fixing that so that the basement isn't moldy and wet and.
The things are not on the records. That one is that he probably left it off, because it's very hard to decide on how he's gonna do it effectively. And coming up with a number to do it effectively would also, might well be out of his fault, which is what it said.
I just wouldn't be surprised, I mean, records, I think things are gonna be going digital at some point. And I know that there's laws about records that we need to keep, but I hope that they can go digital.
How? Because space do you need for your storage?
I would say at this point, probably twice the size of this room.
About the size of this room?
Twice the size of this room.
Oh. You have to, I think you have to give it something.
There's a lot of such, so I, I'll.
I know, somebody can.
I'll take you in the basement. So all the old books that are like this big and this thick for the tax stuff, there has to be maybe 50 to 100 down there. You can't get rid of those.
Can't get rid of them.
Every single set of building plans, which is, Ron just did some reorganizing down there, fills up the whole length of the wall, pretty much. Can't get rid of those. And those don't store in a thing like that, so they're all just stacked on top of each other. Someone would, you know, that part of that.
I was wondering if it could be like a, you know, like these small buildings they have, if that could be placed somewhere around. I sort of walked around the building, but I got there too late.
Those are ready, right. And those are, I mean, that might be a good idea for the ones that we don't access a lot, like the tax collector books and stuff. But then you've got, you know, like, this is all time coming, she's outgrowing, she's eventually gonna need another filing cabinet. There's no room to put a filing cabinet there.
Like, building a building just to put records, it makes you crazy.
And even, even though we're digital, Justin, with like the board of health in the building, we still have to keep a permanent hard copy here.
Yeah, I know. I hope that changes, because I think, I mean, 10, 15 years ago, I think the digital stuff didn't have the level of security. But if we can have it on servers and clouds, I think there are, I mean, we're definitely at a point already, I think, where it's more secure digitally than hard copies. Because hard copies burn and get moldy and get eaten by mice. And I think digital's only getting better. And it just seems like, hell, they don't, the reader that reads it doesn't exist anymore.
I mean, ultimately, if you could get someone in here to determine how to fix the basement, so that we could move the PlayStation downstairs and give us a solution for the storage, that opens up the office that we need and to have a little break room for employees who don't currently have one and, you know, and address all the heating and cooling issues that we have there.
Would it be possible to get quotes specifically for the basement sheet? If we're identifying that as the one central, I mean, that doesn't solve the storage.
Right, no.
But in terms of protecting the building, that seems like one, because allowing the mold and the moisture to continue is gonna.
Well, the, I mean.
Cause problems for the.
It's probably a lot of excavation and drainage and that kind of work, which is very.
Both difficult and expensive.
Difficult and expensive. And I think that's why, I mean, people moved out of the basement long before I was here, not too long, but before I was here. And it's tricky. I mean, I think, uh, it's probably going to be a lot of time and energy and money
Prehibitively expensive.
To really finish a wet basement like that, but.
And possibly prohibitively expensive. The question is, is there anything we could do to keep it from? One possibility is to make it safe to actively inhabit. Option two would be to keep it from endangering the remainder of the building. And I, I'm not in a position to say if that's the case, but my concern at this moment would be, is leaving it unresolved going to compromise the building down the road? And I, it's a question, not an answer, but that's my concern. Because I see everything else you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just like, I don't know. If it was my basement, that's what I'd be worried about.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, in some ways, it's my basement, but you see what I mean? But if we, if we take, so I'm raising the question of, would it make sense to have, who would be the person to come look at that and tell us? Like, yeah, if you don't deal with this in the next X years, you're endangering the integrity of the foundation. Or, yeah, it's not really a problem, it, I just can't use the space. Or, hey, we could put this kind of sealant in the ceiling and it will maybe, obviously, it's okay. I mean, I, I don't know who that person is, or people, maybe, because you might need to get more than one person to look at it, but.
So you don't have to go with the feasibility study that we got the quote for either. That's just the numbers that you know approximately what it's gonna cost, so we can put it out there, and then we can refine it and put it back out there to, you know, more engineers again and see if we get something that's more suitable. I mean, that, that was written so that we could try to get that grant, unfortunately, we didn't get the grant that it was. And then we didn't approve the other ones.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's just my two cents. Maybe, if we're not finalizing a budget tonight, we don't have to make a decision with just the two of us.
How much of this stuff would be done in-house and how much of it would be pummeled out?
The list?
Mm-hmm.
I would imagine it's all, I mean, I think Jim said that he could help with the septic excavation, but other than that, I mean.
That'll be this year. That'll be within this current year. I think they're planning on at least doing the power washing. And if possibly the painting.
Meaning not for corporations.
Right.
Okay.
Possibly the painting. I think those costs, based on how low they are, are just.
They're like.
Reflecting the cost of paint, because I think it's like $70 a year on it. HVAC would be someone else, boiler would be someone else, floor would be someone else, the roof would be someone else.
Okay.
I think that, I'm okay with the idea that HVAC, largely because my suspicion is, even if we were to do something down the road, many splits are mobile. Right? Like, you're not losing the equipment if you.
Yeah, they have to run, they have to run the condenser lines or whatever it may be, but.
Right. You think that that 6,500 is the installation or it includes the installation? You think that that sixty-five hundred is the installation or it includes the installation?
I think it includes the installation.
I, I mean, I have no idea how much the.
But like the, the new, the new ones are gonna require new.
The condenser.
Yeah, because these are all, and it may require moving some of them, cause the way that it's set up right now is actually proving problematic because like. The police department and the assessors are attached to the clerk and the police department and the assessors are always. Hot in their offices, so they keep the AC on all year, and then that means the clerk can't turn the heat on when her office is freezing.
So the zoning issue is a problem, zoning is a problem.
And so that would be the fifteen thousand for zoning?
Yes.
For the traditional heat.
That's a good thing to have.
Um.
Everybody has such.
And it's so weird because like the cycle that's online, if I come in in the morning, my office is warm. But if you go to the office behind me, which should be the next one in the loop, freezing, Mari's freezing, bathroom's freezing.
So I, that, I mean, that's my two cents, there's not really too much more to go over, I would just rather pay for repairs than a consultant. To. De- determine which repairs I would rely on Jim to prioritize repairs.
So and which prep, I just wanna make sure I understand which repairs you were.
I included not the septic, cause Melissa told me that was gonna be dealt with this year, but the roof, twelve thousand.
This year meaning F five twenty-four, as soon as this knows.
Okay, great, very.
The numbers for painting, the HVAC and uh, many splits in zone. Boiler.
And the boiler.
And not the floor. Um, but I'm all about maintaining the building. I just feel like that would be money. Better spent, um, and then the other. Things that I I'm proposing is we have these two old accounts that add up to about fifty thousand dollars. And we could do.
The highway garage siding and the uh.
Phase one of the MVP grant from twenty nineteen.
We have twenty.
Twenty thousand.
Leftover.
And so, I mean, we could do various things with them, either way, they're fifty thousand dollars, we could.
Can we actually just put it into stabilization? Don't we have to use it for something MVP related? Um, so that's what I'm recommending, is that we just modify, amend the article to, cause it was supposed to be for phase one, to say that it's for. The current and any future phases, because we still are going to need some money.
That's the cover?
Twenty-two cover, yeah, so here's the deal, at town meeting, my understanding is you could take money from, if we're outside of town meeting. I think they count, my guess is if you want to do garage, uh, highway siding at the highway garage, you could probably get them write checks for the twenty-nine thousand. And if we were doing phase one, which we're not, for the twenty thousand, we could write checks, but other than that. We, if we go to town meeting, we could put it in anything. We could use it to pay for the police cruiser.
Okay.
I'm not really that committed on what it's going towards, other than that it get out of those. But articles where it's not been doing anything for years.
Right, that, that's fine, I'm just trying to understand what we can put it in.
I, my.
What we can't and what we can use it for.
My guess is that if you can get town meeting to vote on it, you can do anything you want with it.
Yes, because that twenty-nine thousand is actually, its original article was for covering fuel pumps, and that was the remainder of the money's left. And then two thousand seventeen, it got moved to highway garage and siding.
This is the twenty-nine eighty-five four.
Yep.
So I'm not married on it going to stabilization, but I do think that would be. I mean, if we wanted to use those to cut the cruiser, at some point it's all fungible, right? Um. But that shows that we had fifty thousand dollars more to work with, whether it's for free cash articles or to put into stabilization.
Can we use it towards free cash? Like, I I just don't know, I'm not clear on.
I think we could use it on anything at this point, if you can get town meeting to vote on it, town meeting vote on initially to get what it's for.
Anything you want, okay.
And at this point, we could transfer it to anything, if we can get town meeting to vote. On it, free cash, stabilization, police cruiser.
I wouldn't transfer it to free cash.
No, but we can use it on the police cruiser that we're gonna use free cash on.
Gotcha.
And save free cash in that way, I mean, I thought about just saying, just put towards the police cruiser. Um. But just to.
Or just.
Get it back in the mix.
S- I mean, or a- at the very least, the garage siding was always meant for maintenance of buildings, we could put that directly towards.
We could, I mean, yeah, we could do absolutely anything.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it logical to me in a way, applying money that was for fixing one building to fixing another building feels. Um, true to the original purpose of the money.
Yeah, but it was for fuel pumps.
Black, yeah, it was for, right, right, point taken, nonetheless, since it's, on your mind watch, it was for. Building maintenance, using it for building maintenance seems true to purpose.
The other thing that I I would do is. It it really does, again and again, it seems like the biggest concern with the highway one-ton truck is actually the. That five fifty that's gonna cost about two hundred thousand dollars coming up next year.
Next year.
And if we put a hundred thousand dollars into stabilization this year, that's essentially the one-ton truck. For next year, the following year, whenever we need to replace it, plus. Money that we're putting away, rather than, I mean, I really don't see borrowing for, if anything, if we're absolutely gonna buy it this year, I would just. Pay for it with that free cash stabilization money.
I'm sorry, I was gonna buy what, the one-ton or the five fifty?
The one-ton truck.
Okay.
This year, I mean, no one's talked about buying the five fifty this year.
No, I know, but it was listed right under it.
Yeah. Um, that's my two cents, I wouldn't borrow for, I mean, we're borrowing for. We have the three hundred to borrow for, plus any fire vehicles that we borrow for.
It's enough, yeah, I am, um, alright, can, can we come to some decisions going down the list here? Um. The grand total of the maintenance that you calculated was fifty-nine six, and that basically.
Well, the only maintenance that I selected, so that doesn't include the septic, which we assume is going to be done.
On this one? And the heating for.
And the main or floor and LED lighting.
And right, on the LED lighting, which is what Matt Sage would need us anyway.
And I also don't. I don't know how that would go into a special article, just maintenance to town hall, including roofing, siding. I don't know what would be everyone comfortable.
Just the maintenance and necessary maintenance of theirs at town hall.
Yeah.
It seems like pretty much when we're not locked into something, I mean, say tomorrow, something cracks out. Right, or it becomes a higher priority or, yeah.
The other thing, I mean, I'm completely fine making some decisions tonight, but if we need, if finance meets Tuesday and they make decisions to change the budget. And we meet Wednesday and change it back, huh? And then we do that again next week, that's not good for anybody.
Wait, did this come from the finance committee or from?
No, it came from me.
I know, so yesterday they were pretty much in agreement with.
That.
With the budget as proposed.
The existing budget, right.
But they changed to borrow the truck, which we didn't have, and they set up to thirty thousand dollars to maintenance the town hall, and no one had made any decisions on these.
Well, I explained to them that we would likely be transferring the money, they said, oh, great.
Yeah.
But, ah, so they, they called it approximately thirty, which sounds like it was this, and I didn't have the, I don't think I had the numbers for them. Right.
Hmm, and they didn't say borrowing, I've, I've just, it's been in borrowing, but they support the truck.
Okay. But like, supporting it without coming up where we're gonna pay for it from does not help us.
Two-one. Pay for it. And they actually, just so you're aware, on a fire truck. Um. Felt that it was the twelfth hour and that they would rather do a special town meeting, so that this wasn't rushed and. Put the fire trucks on then.
Well, the other thing that I'm, based on the description I read, we're buying one trucker, which is not, which is an SUV. And that probably is in the eighty thousand dollar range outfitted, based on the previous number, so the two thirty-five. Is. Really mostly not the SUV that we're buying, it must be a bunch of, it must be other things.
Right, and we can break that up.
That are, that are buys, but they're smaller buys that are adding up or.
But they're not vehicles, but let's see, yes, so there is six hundred, I don't have a list. And these are rough numbers, cause he did, there was fifty-one thousand for a battery-powered jaws of life. Approximately, was I here typing? Sixty-six hundred approximately for new pagers. So that's fifty-seven thousand six hundred.
Out of two thirty-five.
Out of two thirty-five. And the outfitting, I think he said would be like two thousand dollars or something like that.
Of the new suburban?
Oh, and, and of making the current buggy. Getting the lettering on there and.
Oh, yes, so he's probably saying two thousand for the current SUV.
Right, because the outfitting of the new one would be within the purchase prices, anyway, how much was the new one, did you?
Did you wanna worry about that?
I think roughly whenever we brought it up, you're gonna buy it on state contract, one seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven. That's what I'm coming up hoping you take the fifty-one thousand and probably take another two thousand.
If there's nothing else, if it's fifty-one K, sixty-six hundred, two K, and everything else is the SUV, that's one hundred and seventy-seven, that's a very expensive SUV.
I don't think, I think some of that's for putting the body of this on the, cause they're talking about taking a.
It's like a special or.
Medical vehicle, taking the big medical body off of it and throwing the brush. Body on it, cause when we talked about SUVs before, weren't we talking in the seventy or eighty thousand dollars?
I know, that's why I was like, what? That's a lot for an SUV, what the heck? I think we need a little clearer.
I'm asking him to come, he couldn't come tonight.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, if we can get a breakdown.
In some ways, I kinda agree with the finance committee. Wait until special time meeting, we can actually get.
I know, the only problem we ran into that is when we're talking about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, people understandably get kind of upset that it. And it's a special time meeting, but sometimes that's the reality of the situation.
Well, it's also, we, if we can get a breakdown on what it even is a new, I mean, I really, the more we've talked about it, like the idea of a. Medical SUV, it seems to fit the needs, small roads. Um. And the other vehicle wasn't even available, the brush and radical com- combination.
Right.
Um, and I didn't realize, so he's thinking to use the truck off of the front of medical vehicle for the brush truck.
So it takes like the body and put it on a different.
Take like the engine and.
Chassis of one seventy-nine goes to the brush truck body. Chassis of one thirty-nine goes to the brush.
Which I, I, I think is including, I would imagine is one seventy-nine is including the thing you sit in and the engine and everything. Cause that's what's going on the brush truck, you take the brush, flatbed thing, put it on. That's my guess, anyway, we'll have to get more detail.
Yeah, it's hard to to see that clearly, but, um, but the total was two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
I can give you the other options if you'd rather.
For.
This was the cheapest one he's proposing.
For Sean. There's option one, which is an M two, which is like we've just bought for the, about the two vehicles for the. Highway department, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it would be a medical brush and firefighter truck.
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Would be medical.
Brush and firefighter.
And firefighter body.
That'll be the most beefiest one. Option two is a Ford five fifty, that would have a firefighter body. It would be medical brush and firefighter, but lighter duty than option one. And that would be four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Option three is more of a brush truck, it has, doesn't have a big pump, and it's a five fifty, smaller body, the gallons per minute would be cut way back. It would be mostly medical and brush, no firefighting, and that would be three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Option three is the, uh, basically another buggy and moving the chassis and stuff around. Same downside as option three, it's not gonna have as many gallons per minute.
So the, the point being, the two thirty-five is the lowest cost of the various options.
Yep.
Um. Is it also the one Sean favors in terms of. I think desirable outcomes? Because I know he had issues with a bunch of the available vehicles, which so it. Seems worth asking.
I'm not entirely convinced that he finds any of the options the most desired in.
Oi. I think he's working with what's out there.
Can we, can he come to a joint meeting, so like we're in finance meeting next week? Can we schedule? Finance is meeting by themselves at what, three thirty? Can we meet with them at, um.
On Tuesday.
Oh, shoot, you know what, Sean and I have that.
So you have training, right?
We have that training at, uh, five forty-five, six.
And and Eileen has something at.
Right, she has something at five.
Can we go earlier, can we go a little two P M? Maybe.
I can do Tuesday, but you know, that's another busy workday, I don't know how people feel about it.
Yeah. I don't love it, but it is.
Oh, like Easter, Easter weekend, I don't like that. What about?
Yeah, it's eleven hour and it's like, we need some details.
That's Tuesday.
The only other thing I can think of is to ask the. The finance committee if they can come earlier at the beginning of the S B meeting.
Yeah.
I don't normally like to do that, as we know, but.
Well, no, it is not anything normally anyone wants to do.
I know, I mean, I'm just saying, like, I realize it's unusual, but.
What if we did five P M Wednesday, the twenty-ninth? With Sean and the finance committee? I mean, I really wish we could even do that separately, cause we need to talk with Sean and then we need to.
So he says, don't back him in a corner with this number, because he doesn't know up hand, and I said, just give me a rough number, he says around ninety thousand for the vehicle. So the rest of it must be up there, don't write it down.
Good. Don't watch you.
I have a question, you said, said.
Will, will, can you put it in the special article? We'll sign the mark right now.
Yeah, yikes, um. So, we're suggesting, uh, are you suggesting to do it all at once in Wednesday, or do you wanna try to meet with many seventy?
I don't.
Well, let me see if he can come first.
But if the, if the need is for a medical vehicle, and that gets some medical vehicle, and then they take the old medical vehicle. Truck and put the brush body on it, that really gets us.
A brush body and a medical vehicle.
Yeah, which is what we want.
Right.
And then we can tech separately discuss jaws of life and such, but. I feel like that, that was the request, is we need a medical vehicle and a brush vehicle. And I've, ever since you mentioned the idea of doing it on our SUV instead of, I mean, these F five fifty diesels. With these emissions control garbage are not gonna run like these, like a little SUV.
Yeah.
And maybe it's more appropriate.
Oh, when you came out, if that you've always heard.
Okay, so where does that lead us?
Where does that leave us with meeting with Sean, when should we meet with him, uh, next Tuesday or Wednesday? Uh, after, uh, well, I guess Melissa, maybe you can ask Michelle if we can meet with the finance committee at four thirty?
On Tuesday.
Tuesday, and ask him if he can come at five on Wednesday, because hopefully he won't be able to do it with the training.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, but maybe we could meet with the fin- I mean, I, I think it'd be good to meet with finance committee like we had so many times to. Uh, flesh out some things and then.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Just.
Tuesday or Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha, okay, yeah, I, I'm fine with me joint, the joint meeting, I, you know, I. I, I would like to see us deal with one item at a time and actually come to closure on it, that's my only comment, I feel like we end up.
Yeah.
Widely ranging in the end, we don't revisit.
Well, at this, well, at this point, it's gonna get to a certain point where we're just gonna go through. And it's going to be a question of, is there support for this special article and take a vote, and is it two to one, or is it off the?
Right.
Or is it on and is it supported by? It might be supported by the finance committee and not the select board, and we'll just note that in Warren. Like truck is in the same boat, I'd rather not get the truck this year, I'd rather take whatever funds we're gonna buy the truck with, put them in stabilization. And buy the truck next year. When it's more needed, instead of saying, let's buy it this year because we have other vehicle due next year. Uh, that's my two cents.
So put the, uh, raise appropriate the money or get the money from somewhere to put it in stabilization to buy it next year, but not actually buy it?
Well, they don't even know where it's coming from, right, finance committee voted on the, uh. One-ton truck, but Melissa, you're saying they didn't even say where it's coming, the money's coming from, so that's like not helpful. That, so they didn't say where it's coming from, but. Anyway, so I, do we wanna continue to, we did go over.
If the fifty didn't go into stabilization, you could pay for it free cash, but because they opted to put fifty into stabilization.
Yeah.
It's not enough to pay for the truck.
Yeah.
So that's why I put it into the bordering, if, I mean, right now you've got what, forty, forty-six? If, if I'm able to take the ball field off, you know, fifty-six.
But we're not gonna put it down to zero, what you, what you do is you take the fif- forty-nine thousand and the old articles, pay for that. With the one ton with that, plus your extra thirty thousand in free cash, it's a, what is it, a seventy-eight thousand dollar vehicle? Instead of putting those to stabilization. But what I would do right now is put them going to stabilization just to note that they're accounted for and available. That we have forty-nine thousand dollars that we can do something with, we can buy the truck with them. Which I'd rather not do, but. We can do something with them.
Why don't you just use stabilization?
For buying the truck?
Yeah.
And then put money back into stabilization.
Well, I mean, that you have, the stabilization is supposed to be for these kind of purchases, and D O R only recommends that you need to keep three percent of your total budget, which we're well over that.
Yeah, I need different recommendations, right? We get three percent here and ten percent there, million dollars and, um. I don't know, I'm not gonna, the fact of the matter is, we could vote on whatever we want, if we don't do it with the finance committee, they're just gonna come back next week. So I would be fine, uh, moving on unless you wanna make some decisions, my, my, my reasoning for not making decisions is why do it without the finance committee?
I, yeah, I see your point, um. I, I see your point.
Other than let's do this, why don't we just note that, uh, why don't we just put the forty nine and change from those other special articles towards the police cruiser?
You mean transferring the, the twenty and the, and the twenty nine eighty fifty?
And the twenty nine eighty. Toward the police cruiser, which we know we're gonna get. And then we can put the free cash appropriation towards the police cruiser at like fifteen thousand, does that make sense? I mean, there's, it's not changing anything essentially.
It doesn't really change anything, it just, you know, you can.
That's huge, you know. Um, and then how are you paying for the town hall repairs? Cause you got that.
Free cash, cause that would free up fifty thousand in free cash.
Right, but you can't go both ways, you can't use the same free piece of free cash to.
Well, we're freeing up free cash from the police cruiser, if we only need to.
And we're just bumping it around, so it's.
It's just, it's all, it's shell, it's all a shell game, but right now it's a shell game that these fifty thousand dollars from the old special articles isn't in yet.
True, well, we could just put that right into the maintenance of town hall and make it a one to one.
We did introduce it then. We could do that too.
That just seems simpler rather than who we want to.
We can just.
It's simple, yes.
Yeah.
We can do that, I mean, I, it's all, it's all really the same thing once you.
Cause then it, it won't go on here at all if you do that, it's just gonna go on the warrant, it won't be part of the, the budget. Okay, because it's not money to be raised or appropriated, or it's just.
It would mean cutting out ten grand of the, right, cause it, this totals forty nine grand.
Yeah.
And the maintenance of town hall excluding the floor.
Well.
And the septic totaled fifty nine six, so we need ten-ish short.
Well, I'm just recommending that you just do the twenty nine eight fifty four for maintenance and repairs and see what that gets you. At least gets you the paint and the roof.
Roof and paint.
Like I said, the HVAC and the boiler, I think those are much bigger projects, and they all depend on what you're gonna do here, why would you wanna reroute any pipes if we're gonna do any kind of remodeling here?
What's the condition of the boiler, does it go fitted on that?
Uh, he didn't tell me, I think it was, it's got a couple more years, he said.
So it, it isn't currently fitted.
No.
And so that's.
I mean, the main floor's been on the list for ten years or so.
Yeah, so, so this is.
It's not important.
This is the reason to put the forty nine thousand from the stabilization towards the cruiser, cause it's gonna free up the free cash on your thing. And then you can put whatever free cash amount you wanna put towards, towards these repairs, yes.
It's gonna be forty nine thousand is coming from.
From the old articles, so on the warrant, we'd write, transfer from this old account and transfer from this old account plus the fifteen thousand towards the cruiser.
The charge. It's a. And then what do we do when we need to pay for, um, our portion, something that comes up for our portion of the culvert? The, the twenty thousand that you're taking away.
Yeah, at that point. But I mean, all it's been doing is sitting for four years now, three years.
But you don't know that there's not.
I mean, but money's fungible, right? It's just money at the end of the day.
But if we don't put something in there, in we, in July one, we get a, we owe, you know, sixteen thousand dollars.
I don't think, do we owe? I thought we were supposed to make it through phase two without owing any money.
I'll check with Courtney, but I, I wouldn't, I'm not confident in that.
When we signed off on phase two, I thought we were supposed to do without paying any money.
Okay, so we have to, this is my takeaway from this conversation, check me where I'm wrong, we have to check on what the status of the, um, culvert phase two monies are.
Yeah.
Cause I don't wanna reallocate them if in fact we need.
Except, we just still couldn't spend this, cause this was for phase one.
Right, but if it happens after July one, we're still gonna be in phase two.
But this was for phase one.
Right, but if we amended at the town meeting to say use.
Yes, if we amended at the town meeting, I just, I'd rather, it's, the, I, my feeling with these monies that have been sitting there is just get them worked back into the mix.
Right, which it would be worked back in the mix, you're, you're using it for a completely different purpose, and then we wouldn't have any money left.
I, I'd like to see if it's likely we're gonna need it for phase two, before I make a decision to just free it up for anything.
Well. I would be concerned if we're gonna need it for phase two, cause I really thought we're making it through with phase two with no cost of town, but.
I can't say we're going to.
Yeah.
All right, um, but clearly the twenty nine eight fifty four that was for the garage siding, we can use, we can either put it to, I think it makes more sense to. Put it into the free cash pile and then reallocated from there, rather than try to piece together other things, although I see, I see your point.
Well, if we vote at this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Or we unencumber it, and it goes into free cash, we can only then spend it, uh, free cash is certified, but if we just put it right now towards the cruiser, or s- or put it in stabilization.
But that we can do, is that correct? It's cleaner to me if you just put it towards the town hall repairs, cause it's one thing, it's if you're gonna do it to the cruiser, the article's gonna be, okay, twenty nine thousand dollars for the cruiser from this article.
Yeah.
And then whatever the remaining balance is from free cash.
But we did have a special town meeting, uh, we had money coming from multiple things, remember we had unemployed.
I'm just saying, it's clean. It's still, it's still messy and less clean, and, and the, the numbers like match up better, I just.
Okay. We're all, so we're all aware of this money, and we'll just take the week, I think, to figure out.
To ponder where exactly we wanna aim it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
If you saw puzzles, pieces of your little graph, see which is the needst.
Yes. Um.
Okay.
And I, like I said, would rather not borrow for the one ton truck and the, there's no way to pay for it out of. Free cash, if we're doing the stabilization contribution, we could take the stabilization contribution out, but finance committee meets without us and makes these decisions without us, and so it's like.
Well, I think we had discussed wanting to put money in the stabilization.
Oh, yes, we had, yeah, but it's just be, anyway, I'm not gonna fight against them Tuesday versus Wednesday, and Tuesday versus Wednesday, but, so we'll have to meet again next week.
Right. Right. We're gonna try to set up a meeting where we can meet with them.
Yes.
Um. Do we wanna talk about revolving funds?
Yes. Is there any decision that need to be made on revolving funds, or are you all set to go into the town meeting warrant, Melissa, with this year? Okay.
Um, I think the only thing that is on the version I saw is that there's no number filled in for the community center.
Annual spending limit.
Yep.
Right, and I, I think that is gonna be a great.
My thought was ten thousand.
That works for me, I, I mean, I, that seems like it's more than they're likely to collect at the moment, so.
Yeah.
Um, and the only other. The only other question I had, I think you can, might have answered it in the email, but I was wondering, currently, the situation is that the Valley Galley revolving fund. That is funded by the rent from Valley Galley House, can be used either to repair Valley Galley House. Or to fund the community center, is that what the current situation?
No. Only eleven thousand, whatever it is, change can be used for the community center, and fifteen hundred for Valley Galley, would be for the vision, it would only be for Valley Galley.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. And what would cover, um, group, is anything currently covering the maintenance of the communities that are building?
Their budget.
Their budget, so that's just in their budget line, it's not considered a separate piece of anything.
And a lot, a lot of the maintenance, like plowing, is done by the highway department?
I actually meant the physical thing, but.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but I think they do take care, I think Jim takes care of it as well.
That's good too. Okay, all right, so it, it's still covered, just not here, and that's fine, and I'm fine with ten grand. And that's otherwise done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the unreasonable noise bylaw, I don't, it doesn't even really need to draw much attention this week.
It didn't seem like it was substantively, like, it just, this just includes what we talked about last week.
No. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but now you have another clean copy if you wanna review and, uh, what, add it to the warrant.
That's fine. Um, have you considered, um, writing anything about it for the issue of Monterey News, it'll come out in time for you again?
Um, I have not written anything.
Okay.
Um, it's not a bad idea.
So just, uh, on that, on the topic of writing for Monterey News, I did write something up for the Monterey News about, um, the budget. Regarding salaries.
Yeah.
And, um, changes that Scott and I have approved for part-time employees.
Yes.
And the short-term rental community impact fee, um, those are the three topics I've covered. Are there any other topics you think that either of us should address in advance of the meeting, so people can see something about them?
Yeah.
Either as a group or as individuals.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I've always thought to some degree, the warrant kinda speaks for itself.
For itself, mm-hmm.
I know that that's not fully the case, um, but I think what we could do to get the best. To allow people the best opportunity to think on things and talk about them, is get the warrant out as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, if I, I mean, it would probably be good for me to write about the noise bylaw and such, a couple people have reached out to me, cause they've seen it in the agenda minutes and shared their thoughts, and that's actually. Some of the thoughts have made their way into it, like the generators, which were mistakenly, I put in as specifically banned and not exempted, um.
Yeah, right.
Did we get anything back from the police chief? You know, I was just gonna say, I would also suggest you reaching out to the police chief, I think he's waiting for you to consult with him.
Yeah, I'll send this over to him, the police department will enforce it, it's my understanding that the police department will collect the, uh, penalties as it's currently drafted.
Right.
Not anyone else.
Okay.
Um, that's my understanding. Yeah, we're gonna buy the police department.
I think that'd be a good idea, especially since if he's gotta enforce it, he's gotta be comfortable if he can.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, obviously there are some things doing so in other towns, since it's drafted on the basis of something other towns are doing, but I still think it would be really good to do that.
Yeah.
Um.
But yeah, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, I think it's good, yeah, to get information out there, um, I wish that. You know, I could, or, yeah, I, I, I don't know that I, I will be, uh, I don't know that I will, but, um, I will consider it.
Okay.
I know we only have a day or two left.
He, he actually asked if, since when I sent him the things that I had written, he wrote back implying that he can hold it for another month, so it'd be closer to meeting, but I'm like, or we come out after? The town meeting?
Well, I, they usually try and be out at the beginning of month, right, so it'll come out before May.
I started. True, but sometimes, well, I guess the.
They won't, if they come in the mail, it al- it always says after the meeting.
Yeah, I think the online one might be out anytime, but I'm not sure about the, cause the physical delivery's been taken a long time, now that it has to go all the way to Springfield and back.
Yeah.
It's not real reliable, um, I, I, shall I send you what I wrote, just so you can check to make sure I make any factual error?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll do that.
I, yeah. Oh, you don't, yeah, I mean, that's good, good stuff, my, I think the part, the thing that I can do that can be the most helpful to people, being able to digest it and think on it, is get, just helping get the warrant out.
I, I agree.
Should be later, that's I think the best thing that I can do, I would consider.
I basically feel like, I, you know, I get emails sometimes asking about things, and then I got several emails asking about issues of raises. And I, in, in a way, it's useful, because I feel like if one person asks, other people probably have similar questions, and I felt like it was better to address some of those questions beforehand, they'll still get asked. But at least some of the people present will already have a sense of why they're in there, because you can see a number, but you don't necessarily know why the number is there.
Yeah.
And yeah, we can stand up and address it, for sure, but I sort of feel like forewarned is forearmed, like if we're giving them an opportunity to be informed beforehand. So that it's not just a number, it's why the number's there, it's helpful, it would be helpful to me if I was, when I was in the other chair, out there.
Yeah.
Out there.
Anyway, so.
So, I will, I will send the unreasonable noise bylaw to the police chief. Um, the consolidated departments bylaw, I, we were going to do various things a few months ago. I do think, I talked to Donna, and I still think that it would make sense to adopt, uh, uh, consolidated departments bylaw whereby the building commissioner. Is the direct supervisor of the department, which includes the building zoning officer, the plumbing gas inspector, and the electrical inspector. That would be the whole department, it would encompass health inspections, common com inspections, fire inspections, those would remain independent. Um, I would, if you're favorable to that idea, I will just, I would ask Donna to draft something to that effect, or a bylaw to that effect.
It, I'm fine with it, I, does anybody know how the plumbing, why are people still that?
No.
Do we know of any downsides to doing it?
My understanding was that, for years, this is kind of how it was thought to be run, and then we only recently discovered that it wasn't run like this. At the point that the, that one of the inspectors has made that he doesn't report to anybody, I mean, even now isn't the case. The inspectors are still report to the select board and the town administrator. What we've actually done is, I think we temporarily took a vote, could be wrong, we definitely considered it, and we could do it where we just delegate the authority to the building commissioner to supervise those. And those inspectors, this would just.
Qualify it.
Qualify it.
I, I think it's probably cleaner to just go ahead and qualify it.
Yeah, I will ask Donna to draft that up, um, I think, and then we'll just put on the town meeting warrant and explain. Um, the open space and recreation plan, it does seem like a lot of work to do.
So.
I don't know.
If you, just let me know if you want me to apply for the grant that's out there that would help to figure out.
Yeah.
Correct? That would be the easiest, I would think, and then I can apply for this small community grant, I don't know what it's called, um, and then I believe we have someone probably like the F P C write for open space.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if you're willing to write the grant, and it could potentially open up a decent sized pot of money that could help with a number of projects, I don't see a downside, do you?
Yeah, it was just, how much money are we responsible, you said we're responsible for twenty percent of the plan if we get the grant? Okay, so maybe it would be the kind of thing.
Twenty percent of the plan, not twenty percent of the granted monies.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's forty thousand like the master thing, like we're responsible for.
Right.
Yeah, and then the other thing that's come up with the master plan is the Community Preservation Act.
What about it?
I don't know how mu- how this relate, I don't know how they relate to each other, they seem somewhat interrelated.
I think that you have to have a master plan to be able to move forward with some of the issues that you can move forward with, if you want to do so regarding the Community Preservation Act. I don't think it requires you to do so, you just have to have the master plan recently enough to be able to qualify.
Yeah. Well, I think it's gonna be a decision in the next couple years, is do we want to do one?
Mm-hmm, uh, which, we have a master.
A community, a C P A.
Right. Yeah?
That requires town meeting.
That absolutely requires town meeting, if you're willing, I, I have a feeling it'll be somewhat contentious, since I don't completely understand it, um.
Yeah. Sure.
But I don't think they're mutually exclusive, the open part of the thing, yeah.
I don't think they are, I don't think. But they seem somewhat related to me, it seemed like that's all, but I'm, I'm in favor of the open space and recreation plan, it, I mean, it, it's a good long-term planning tool, it seems like.
And we have a lot of open space, and certainly recreation is important, so like, if that could open up some big grants for us. I think it would be money well spent, cause I suspect the amount of grant money would be a lot more than twenty percent of whatever the ultimate plan price would be.
Yeah, are you willing, you're willing to do that, Melissa? That would be great, please, thank you. I know, calendar for final, the finalization, calendar for finalizing budget.
And the budget's not so important, I just kinda wanted to put it out there to, let's try and find. And the budget's not so important. I just kind of wanted to put it out there to, let's try and finalize the warrant so that I can send it to Donna before I leave on vacation to see if the articles are written.
Yeah, and what, what, I forgot what the proposed uh Tom on is. Is it finalizing it next week?
Yeah, finalizing so that I can at least have the the articles written, but she would have it
By three twenty-nine, yeah.
And she would have it all this week and then you guys on the twelfth, I would like them to sign it. Because signing and issuing, by the time I get into the printer, it's around here, I'm gonna guess, you know, absolutely
Well, the earlier the sooner.
Drop dead date could be this, but if you really wanna get it out to people, the printer, they're not gonna get it till around here, you know?
I'm all in favor of of signing the warrant earlier as much as possible. And if we shoot for the twelfth and we don't hit it, we're okay, but we're we
Um, and if we end up with changes to the budget lines, that mean three twenty-nine and four twelve, what happened? Who's the process for that?
You'd still be able to take this thing. I'm only gonna send it for written articles.
Okay.
And even if we have special articles, they're, I mean, it's gonna be fairly simple. Like let's say we decide and wanna get a truck.
Mm-hmm.
It's not rocket science to say eighty thousand dollars from free cash or any other relative there to all that work.
Right.
Uh, and we could even run by an individual thing, but if you can get the gist of it. So, which, I guess one discussion we should have is, so we're gonna have all the normal articles, we're gonna have the budget, we're gonna have the special money articles, and then other than that, we're talking about having the short-term rental taxes, three articles, and you have those, Melissa, and they've been vetted by council.
Yeah.
And the noise, unreasonable noise, which we're not quite wrapped up with, but we're close. We're gonna run it by the police chief, will be another special article on there.
I'm wondering what we're gonna get back to the bylaw review committee if it if it's gonna be in time for this.
So that's the other thing is I would suggest that any submissions to the warrant, the deadline would be next Tuesday.
And I I think that pretty much guarantees it will all
Well
It would also be for citizens' concerns.
My, well, my other question is, what about this school merger group? Are they still shooting for this annual town meeting?
I think that, didn't we have that letter that they're not?
Yeah, I thought it was
I think they're they're now proposing it would have to be a special town meeting, which I don't know how I feel about, but
I don't remember, I, the most recent letter, and maybe I missed one, but the most recent letter was we're shooting for annual town meeting full statement.
I think there was one after that.
Okay.
I think I heard that too, that they would
It was quite a while ago, that one we talked about.
Yeah, January, monthly update or something like that.
I I think the February one might have been the other one.
Okay. Um.
But I could, I could ask.
And then we'll have the consolidated departments by law. I mean, the other thing is the bylaw review committee was supposed, is supposed to make a package that is still, has to be considered by the select board to some degree. I mean, I think we'll give them a lot of deference, but
They wanna have a public meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and as I understand it, what they're trying to do is consolidate the re- renumber and consolidate the articles so they actually make sense, so that the articles that deal with a particular topic are together and consistent, and the language is consistent and um I, you know, I hope you not support that. It's just a question of the timing of it. Um.
Yeah.
Everybody wants special town meetings and nobody wants special town meetings at the same time.
Yeah.
Because it's a shame to let it go home another year, but
Well, we can consider when it comes up. Um.
Cause it's out of our hands in any event.
And then the revolving fund changes are the, is that just going in the normal revolving fund table slot? Or do we have to make a bylaw change for that?
Right, there'll be two. So you're gonna have the one that approves the that fixes the maximum amount that can be sent, that'll be one article, and then we'll have one to amend the articles. And then there's a possibility you could have a recommendation from the transfer station committee, right, to add a new one possibly.
Hey, I I don't wanna like, I'll just tell you that one of the things Ken raised, and this is not, there's no decision.
It's just an enterprise
Question. It's not enterprise, it is not enterprise. He, as you know, he's had a longstanding concern that the sticker fees going to a free cash was like a double hit because we're underwriting the functioning of the transfer station on the warrant budget item for the transfer station, the transfer employees, and then we thought the sticker fee.
Yeah.
Um, one thing he suggested was the possibility of having the sticker fees go, which were revolving fund, although none of the details were flushed out in that. It's coming in concert with our conversation coming up on Monday to try to set the sticker fee. So I was just trying to make sure I understood if that were going to occur, how it would work. And I'm not, I I neither support nor don't support it now. It's just as something under conversation.
So, but if you look at the tax rate recap, where the tax rate is set, the accountant estimates trans- transfer station fees.
Mm-hmm.
And that counts directly against the money to be raised with taxes. So we are not doubling up. I mean, usually it, she's underestimating. So maybe we collected eighty thousand last year and she estimated sixty-five thousand. But we're raising sixty-five thousand dollars less than raising appropriate. So it's not like we're just going, oh, look at this fees we got, we'll just get the free cash.
Disagree with you. I, right, I'm not gonna disagree with you. I think his point is that we're all paying equally to support the transfer station in our taxes. But then the people who, and everybody's paying that same amount, but then the people who use the transfer station pay this issue. And I I can, you know, it's a conversation we're having.
Yeah.
I'm just reporting the conversation at this point, right, and to to lay the foundation. At some point, we're, we'll have to set that figure.
Yeah.
So, back to the school, yes, the February letter says that the new timing, because the complexity of the assessment that their um recommendations be put before the voters as special town meetings this fall rather than at the annual town meetings in May, June.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Everybody wants a special pen?
Um.
One for the fire truck, and one for the schools, and one for the bylaw review committee.
So the Curtis Road Bridge, do we have to do vote at something at this town meeting?
Yes, and Donna's working on that.
But we don't have it yet.
I don't have it yet.
Don, which, Donna.
So that will be something else. That's everything that I can think of for the annual town meeting warrant.
That's a lot. Oh, it's gonna be big. Yeah. Never a dumb one.
Um.
Is there anything in, in the anticipated business?
We have
Funded?
Ah, yes. Yeah, we have a request used legal counsel. So there's an applicant disputing a twenty-one day determination from the COMCOM. I would move to approve the request.
I'd say.
Any other discussion? We then will call vote.
Yeah.
And yes, so that's approved to zero?
I, because this reminded me, I'm jumping back to the question of the revolving funds. Do you feel confident that that cap for the scenic mountain is at?
They don't get too many.
Okay.
I'm gonna be something interesting.
Well, I just, wasn't clear to me that it did come. That's what I was concerned about, that
Then I think they're supposed to be looking at raising their fees.
Right.
I thought that they were.
I thought I had asked something. Didn't they, they sent us something that had their thoughts of what they were gonna do, but I don't know if they actually did it.
Yeah, I knew she
With their fees schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, we told them.
We thought it was right, right, but I don't know whether they actually changed the fees.
I think it had some difficulty, one member quit. And then I'll have to have a surgery.
Oh, yeah.
But she went to her doctor's office and ended up in surgery.
That's always alarming.
Yeah.
And we always need more conservation commissioners.
I'm not getting any more jobs right now.
Um. So we'll shoot, so, uh, sorry, not to jump back, but so for the calendar, what we are shooting for is sending it to council after next week's meeting. And then signing on the twelfth, subject to being able to do that.
And hopefully by then we'll also have any final budgetary adjustments if we can.
So legally, I think we need to have it done by that meeting on the twenty-sixth technically, but we don't wanna do that.
It's Saturday, a Sunday.
Yeah, I mean, if we were gonna have a regular meeting.
No, April.
Oh, wait, sorry, right, right, April.
I mean, that wouldn't be the last date. We could actually meet
Ah.
after that.
Yeah, that's a terrible idea.
Right, right. Yikes.
Um.
But it would never get to the end of time.
Calendar for final Okay, uh, unanticipated business, uh, I don't Um.
Was that the only thing?
No, I have
Minutes.
So, I only got three eight. Yeah, I I only got three, three eight.
So the first thing is just it needs to be with, just confirm with Melissa, or just confirm that Melissa said that.
I'm sorry, where were we? Oh.
We can just delete all of it.
Yep. Confirm that, the highway department.
Um, and then Jerry did say this thing that's a little, that was a little bit confusing, but he did say it. And it started from something Michelle said about um, if the select board should pay for any work that the highway department does towards the playground project. He, she, Michelle said this because she felt that if the playground project was getting help from the highway department, I don't wanna like quote her, I think, and then Jerry repeated it, and I do remember that. But I think in general I would be in favor of going back towards a lot less detail in the minutes. Because, because of this.
This, this does feel like
Because, yes, because of the
This went past the happy
Because I think, the thing is, a lot of people say a lot of things, and Jerry did say that. And no, no one on the board ever really thought that or said that, but Jerry did say it. Michelle had kind, I think it's based on something Michelle had said. Um.
I'm gonna say, I I'm for a happy medium, right?
Yeah.
I I feel like my attitude about minutes is that they are the official record of what transpires. It doesn't have to say every single thing that happened. However, the statement, having say six P M. meeting with parks commission to discuss Green Park playground project, a discussion ensued, item two, would basically be nothing more than than the agenda, right? And it's not really a record of transpired. So I agree with you. I am in favor of less than this. I'm looking for the sweet spot.
Well
The happy medium. It's hard to know what to include and what not to. I brand you. It's, in the end, it's all politics and it's a political document. But if you don't have any substance, the idea that this is our record of what transpired without going back to look at the film, it's also a way for someone who wasn't there to wrap, to, if it's four pages, you can skim through there fairly quickly to get just of what happened. If all it says is a discussion ensued, a discussion ensued, a discussion ensued, you have no more information than you would have had reading the agenda.
Well, I think yes and no, because one thing that we do a lot here that we don't need to do, and I think that there's some value in it, we talk about things before acting on them. But none of this discussion, none of what Jerry said, or, I mean, at the end of the day, uh, the, after the whole discussion of the playground, there was one motion and one vote, and it was tasked the parks commission to make a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
That's where the only action, because to the extent it's uh someone saying something, I mean, I just in in general could do with less of that in the minutes. Mostly because the discussions are not any actual actions. And and I think we can mention what discussion is about, but once you mention what one person said, how you not mention what the other person said.
But how you substantiate why you take an action if you don't include any discussion?
Well, I'm not saying don't include any discussion, but include major discussion topics and major discussion points.
Okay.
And pretty much omit
Play by play.
Play by play.
Okay, I I'm good with that as long as we can in, find a way to include the major discussion points.
Yes.
I I don't disagree with you in principle. I think the tricky part is how to carry it out. And I think that's what gives us extra, it's difficult, it's very hard. Like where do you draw the line of what you include and what you don't is the hard part.
Well, what if we just say, as a rule of thumb, we're, we're including discussion topics and points, but not statements?
Okay.
Not individual statements, but discussion topics and points, like
Does that help?
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Because I, it's hard, like people say things like a lot of what you hear, okay, that was said. But at the end of the day, it's not, you shouldn't, I don't even think it really deserves to be in the official record of the board because it could be
I'm perfectly happy to delete that sentence, for example. I I'm fine with that.
Yeah, no, I'll keep that sentence. I mean, it's not untrue.
Right, but but your point is well taken. If it's just distracting from the general conversation and doesn't actually inform whatever decision we did make.
Yeah.
I I'm not disagreeing with you, right?
Okay.
Like to me, it isn't about reporting everything everybody said. It's about making sure that whatever decisions we do make, there's some record of why we chose to do that, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, yeah. Uh, yeah. So, but we will, yeah, we'll delete that sentence. It was confusing. I remember Jerry saying it.
You could actually delete the next sentence too, right? As Susan said, she
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll delete those two sentences.
I'm all for getting out the red pen. But it's, it can be hard to do. So that, the paragraph that starts at the very end of the first page, that
We'll just delete that.
Do you wanna just delete it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're marking it, Justin?
What's that?
You marking it?
Yes, sure. I, yeah, I'll go with the copy. Tom said that the parks commission We're gonna do it, uh, first, I said, second, please. Tom explained that the original quote was from the playground designer based on equipment.
Requested Oh, goodness, we, yeah, we did our usual thing. Uh, so yours would read, how Tom said that the parks commission, in order to devote
No, it doesn't. It messes it off.
Okay. I really hate the way we're does this so badly.
Um, why don't we just go with Tom explained that the original quote was from the playground designer based on equipment requested in the
In the parent's, right?
Good. Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
Ooh.
Sorry, I was fixing
Are you ready?
I am, but it should, but a, it shouldn't say miracles of Tom, okay? It's just, uh, that, I guess miracles quote, or miracle quoted.
Miracle, yeah.
And and probably I could have found more, but sometimes it's easier to tweak it than to cut it. Okay. Hashtag, wait, what happened? I'm not sure.
This is how I would have it read. The select board received two letters, one from Steve Snaremer, and one from Dennis Lynch yesterday. The letters concern the diver assisted suction harvesting dash that has been completed this fiscal year, but they are still expecting to complete this fiscal year and their budget request for next year for milfoil mitigation. The Lake Garfield working group are requesting fifty thousand again for milfoil mitigation in fiscal year twenty-four.
Perfect. I'm not sure what they, did we have a conversation about revolving funds or this?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to?
They wanted a revolving fund and you can't because there's no income.
There's no income, right, okay.
Uh. Justin noted that as there is no related revenue revolving fund, it would not be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that's accurate. Yeah, I mean, that's a good thing, right, to have in there.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's a, they had a question and we answered it.
That they could investigate a late taxes protest. Possibly, yeah. I'll just add an A in there.
Yep.
Um. Should we add the Lake Garfield tax district onto the warrant? No, it's too late in the game.
I think.
It's too late in the game.
It's never gone forward. When I, when they tried, I think we wanted to suggest that we'd have to do.
Do it a long time ago.
Footwork to support it.
Yeah, you'd have to do that six months in advance.
Yeah.
Every other month in the paper.
I mean, like, I'm not even sure that a lot of this paragraph needs to be in there, but. We're putting it on the warrant, right? So it's not like we're asking them to do a citizen's petition. Does it need to be in there? We could cut it out.
No, we're putting it on the warrant.
Right.
Justin explained that story. The community center operating budget has been paid for out of.
The.
Revolving fund, however. They issued a proposal list to make community, you know, community center operating expenses a new line item. Justin reported that this is mostly due to Valley Alley, which required.
Requires significant maintenance this year.
Maintenance this year. End sentence.
Yep.
Which the board will need approval on the warrant.
Okay. Wait, which will need approval on the warrant? Okay, gotcha. Yep.
Scott said he thought the community center was supposed to be self-supporting. Susan said that she.
Do we wanna just delete the entire paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the one that they said they.
The one that Scott said?
Yeah.
Justin raised the question of how to handle the revenue from the community center since it will be approximately one thousand, two thousand a year. I just thought we could make a separate revolving fund for the community center, or it could go into a general fund. Um, if the board wants to develop a separate revolving.
Yeah, let's keep yours.
Yeah, keep orange. I'll delete Justin. Oh, Justin explained the plumbing.
Or it's just currently.
Under.
What the heck was I doing?
Worth.
Under consideration?
Under consideration.
Did something get cut off there? So it must have been.
Consideration. Mayor reported that voluntary rebuilding inspectors are bothering the community center on how to proceed with this.
I mean, again, like, if it's too much, we can just cut it. I know it's an important conversation to a lot of people, but we don't have to cover everything everybody said, right?
The next page looks fine, it's twenty.
Uh, is that this page?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, debt services might get be confusing because I'm still confused.
You think?
You were confused then and you're still confused today. Wait till next week.
Well, frankly, it is confusing.
It is.
Yeah.
Was it fifty one thousand or fifty, or fifty one seven or fifty one nine?
Fifty one seven.
Fifty one seven.
That's just what I read here.
You read where?
Here, at fifty one seven.
What, what's here on the annual town meeting warrant?
No.
What are you holding?
That one, that.
The budget.
The budget thingy.
That says what we did last year.
Said what you did last year was fifty one seven.
I trust you.
Takes three of four in yesterday's papers.
So this was me trying to reword this without suffering from the red orange problem. I don't know if it works or not.
Yeah. I think that's good. We'll go with that, other than that it's fifty one thousand seven.
Okay. Suppose we could just say, we currently owe. Instead, just to get out, Melissa reported, you know what I mean, the the lessons. It just, instead of saying, Melissa reported that just you and they owe sixty eight hundred, and then we currently owe, because we.
Yeah, I don't blame them for leaving. Well, it was Dennis, so we need to get the bottom of the MVP phase two. But I don't know if he's gonna know that or be our PC.
I'm just gonna.
You don't have to, it was finished in the.
Okay. My, your library, whoops, I missed that one. And my main was Smitty got put off.
Uh, motion approved, March eighth, twenty twenty three, as amended.
Second.
Call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, since those minutes are approved to the zero, we will hit up three fifteen next week. Eight. Are there comments and questions from public?
Uh, yeah, when are we going to work on the operating budget? Or things like the library?
That's a nice question. So I have actually, I asked, um, I emailed Mark a couple of weeks ago when Scott and I, right after Scott and I had finalized that we agreed in principle that we wanted to include paid holidays and asked them to send us a modified budget. I had not heard from him, so a couple of days ago, I emailed him again, and along with John, and asked for the same. I, we have not yet, at least I have not yet received a modified budget.
I thought he had sent one at the end of the month, last time we got a month end.
I didn't receive one that I'm aware.
So that was probably just a sick time, and then the following week they added holiday.
Right.
Oh.
It was us being, like, admittedly, it was annoying that we did it in two steps, and I apologize to him as well as to everybody else, but we did it in two steps. It's still yay, right?
So, um. I'll see that show the numbers next week, I'll bring them in.
Okay, because there's.
I know, and I, I, when I spoke to him today, I'm not doing, you know, this kind of speaking. Well, my, um. He said he was going over some, something else that he had received and was different information he wanted to review that. I don't even know what it was, because I can't talk to him.
I actually said, I think the second time I said it, I sent him the the actual wording that we had, Eve and I and um, Sophia had come up with to cover the holidays. So having that wording might have been helpful because it lays it out clearly.
Oh, so maybe that was, it maybe the holidays that came in, yeah, and he hadn't had time to review it.
Totally possible. That's fine. I just, there's, the answer is that it because we did it in two steps.
But I mean, I have to know, do I have to come next week?
It, it because we did it in two steps, instead of doing both those substantive changes at one time, it resulted in a re-ask, and I feel bad about it, but ultimately, it's a good thing because we're doing a good thing. It's just.
Yeah, no, I just wanna know, I just wanna know so that.
I know, I just felt bad. I did feel bad that I would make more work.
Just so that I can, uh, know they have to come next week. I thought, oh, are we shopping?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, twenty minutes early.
Not, nothing else, some other business. We'll see you next week. Oh, actually, one thing that would be good to clear up is, uh, meeting schedule next week. So we'll meet at six P M. For a regular meeting, maybe before that, five P M. With the fire chief.
Right now, he said he can't commit to five at the moment, but at some point he can that evening.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can put him on the agenda. And then I really would like to meet with the finance committee because, like I said, I'm a little more sure to meet with them and discuss the budget. And then at some point, two, we're going to want to know which committee, if the committee and the board approve of certain articles, if take those votes at some point, because it may get to a place where the finance committee wants to support special articles like they're does and vice versa.
So the only thing I can see ending up being tricky at this proposed joint meeting is that we're suggesting quite a a few changes, and even I'm unclear where that change would go.
This change?
Right.
It's so like not. It really doesn't matter where it goes.
Right.
Just somewhere, right? And.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going down, I'm just envisioning in my head, I'm sitting here with the budget up, and we're going down item by item, and we have to say, oh, wait, no, this amount should be.
So I think actually, you know what, the cleanest way to do it is just transfer to stabilization, and then they have the fifty thousand going towards stabilization from free cash. And if we need to use that on a truck or town hall repairs, just use that on a truck or town hall repairs.
Don't, I recall that to actually allocate money that's currently in stabilization, we need a town meeting vote.
Yes, but this is just money that, um, fifty thousand that is currently in free cash that they have said they wanna put in stabilization. So if we need that money to buy the one time truck.
I see what you're saying.
Just tell them, take that money. Right now, the way we can draft up is this twenty nine will be going just to stabilization, and that's kind of simple.
Okay.
It's all a shell game, but I just wanna make sure that this is included somewhere in the game.
No, I get it. It's just a whole. Yes, absolutely. I I agree with that. Um.
I, I, that makes sense, and I feel like that's a simple way to include it in the game.
How about I list out all the options?
Well, there's infinite. I mean, we could put it towards anything, right?
All the options for what? For where we would put it? So like that twenty nine dollars, I'm gonna say like we have twenty nine thousand. It's been suggested either put it in stabilization, use it for town hall repairs, put it toward the cost of the cruiser.
But it's all fungible. The fact that it's in there is what matters, and then what we need to decide is what are we putting in stabilization? What are we spending on special articles? And then that will determine how much free cash is left.
This is a strange question, but I feel like it could be, um, it it could help. When you say, this, this is actually the budget, right? When you say put it in the stabilization, or where, where would you actually put it here?
It would be a special article that would say transfer twenty nine thousand from this account to stabilization.
Okay, that's, that's.
And that's why, that's why I think it's just kind of clean. It keeps it out of this. And then what it does free up is we could still make a fifty thousand commitment to stabilization without spending fifty thousand in free cash. I just spent any money that I would like. We don't want to do that.
Or thirty thousand.
What really matters is actually what, things that we purchase or don't purchase. And then after that, we can play with the money all that we want. We just need to set what we want, you know?
That's a good thing to say in front of.
Pardon?
You're gonna play with the money? Excuse me?
Well, in all, it is essentially.
I think it's a question of where, where, where do you put it? You go put it in there and then take it out here. I.
Play with the same.
It's actually frustrating, it's frustrating to talk about anymore because it just.
Yeah, I get it. You just explained it much better the last time, though.
Yeah.
That made a lot more sense to me, the way you just said it, was putting it into stabilization and then deciding what things you wanna buy.
With the free cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The way you were explaining it before made it sound like it was like totally convoluted.
Yeah.
Yes, I felt like.
Too much shell.
I felt like when we wrote the articles, it was gonna be like, did we get that right? Like, did I drop twenty thousand off the price of the cruiser, and he's only gonna get three quarters of a cruiser? You know?
Three wheels is fine.
So.
I used to call it a tricycle.
We were saying that twenty nine and change goes here. Like, that.
Yeah, the problem is, if you put something in that cell, it takes out a free cash.
Right, so nothing, the twenty nine and the twenty, if we don't need a twenty for the MVP, is not gonna be on there at all. Okay. But neither is the fifty thousand going into stabilization.
Gotcha.
So that'll raise the balance of free cash from forty four nine or whatever's there to ninety nine.
Yeah.
This one actually, this was the three sixteen, and it has ninety six. Do I not have the right?
No, you took the fifty thousand out of stabilization.
Okay.
Three twenty.
You're missing fifty thousand, should we?
I'm missing the three twenty two, is what I probably didn't, I probably downloaded and had the wrong one up, but that's fine. I'll fix that. Okay.
That's why it's, it's clean, it, it's clean, why don't we just propose that we're putting those in stabilization? I think that's clean. I do.
Okay.
That's me.
I, I totally see your point.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Blah.
Second, uh, did you have a second motion?
Oh, yes, and yes.
And yes, meeting adjourned at seven forty six P M.
Also.